Welcome to the special town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona. It's Thursday, August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Meeting is now called to order. We've done a silent roll call. So that's out of the way. We have one action item on the agenda. But before we do that, I just wanted to make a quick announcement that we're going to put out a proclamation for the Child Support Awareness Month. Coming up and that that will be signed here in the next, next few days. It's the town of Cave Creek joins the nation in recognizing August as Child Support Awareness Month and reaffirms its commitment to strengthening Arizona's family by providing child support services to improve the economic stability and well-being of children. And it goes on with all the wherances after that. With that, we'll move to the first agenda item, which is presentation by Grid Bridge Group LLC. Oh, I'm sorry. How'd they miss that?
Oh. Is it there?
I don't see it on there. It's on the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Fels, you're the only civilian in the audience, so.
Let's do. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, now we're back to the general agenda item, presentation by Bridge Group LLC on strategic planning, council discussion and possible approval to engage Bridge Group LLC services, presented by the Bridge Group. And if you'll introduce yourselves and be sure to give us a bio source.
Morning. Good morning, Mayor and council members. We're very, very pleased to be here. We do have a slide presentation that I assume will be coming up, but but I'll start. My name is Mike Rutter and I'm a member of Bridge Group. My background is primarily thirty years in in the city management side of the equation here in Arizona, city manager of Sedona, also was in Tucson, Tucson, Arizona. And prior to that, most of my career was on the, on the, on the East Coast. I started strategic, doing strategic plans in cities in nineteen ninety-four, ninety-five. And so besides having consulting experience with clients, both Bill and I have done plans in the communities we work in. So we know how to build operational plans that, you know, work, work for community. Our firm is located in Arizona. We're located in Tucson, Bill's in Phoenix, and oh, now it's up. Bill's in, Bill is in Phoenix, so we also have offices in San Diego. I'll let, like Bill, so.
I'm going to stand for my portion of the presentation, but as Mike pointed out, one of the strengths that Mike and I have is we were and are friends long before we started consulting. I have about thirty and technically forty years of local government experience. And as you see in my bio, I'm also a current city council member in the city of Goodyear. And in, and in, in my third term, having done that. So Mike and I bring the perspective of your position sitting on the dais as well as Kerry's position sitting here as the city manager and that, as we talked about creating a system that works, we need it to work for both the staff and for the policymakers. So that is kind of the process that we put together and we'll go through that in just a few minutes. Do you want to talk about Bridge Group?
Oh, okay.
Okay.
It was quick.
All right. Well, I guess it will be me. So we talk about our strategic planning process being different and you've been through a process in the recent past. And one of the things that Mike and I decided to do was make a process that is completely different and we focus more on actually getting things done and a little less about visioning. In, use the example, in two thousand and eight, the world changed for us financially. In two thousand and seven, we all thought we had the world figured out and we were moving forward. Two thousand and eight, we went through this financial collapse. Thought, well, it'll just be a year or two and the next thing you know, it's twenty fifteen and we're finally out of this long-term recession. And what we kind of took away from that process was we have to do things differently. The old way of strategic planning was we started the conversation with if money were no object, and then we moved forward. And the quest, the question with that is when was money never an object? And what can we really execute these visions? Or should we really be focused on getting something done for the community? Because that's why we all run. We run to get things done for the community. We want to, we're here to serve our, our fellow resident, our fellow man, if you will. So Mike and I created a system that really looked at getting things done and less about what does the vision of ten years from now look like? And the other example that I like to use is in twenty eighteen, what did twenty twenty-two look like for you? Because I guarantee you, at least for me, twenty twenty-two did not look like any, it turned out to be nothing what I imagined. And that was only four years. And I think even we stand here today in twenty twenty-three and two years ago, I don't think we believed we'd be standing in the situation that we're standing in. So the windows are shorter. Previous planning processes used to be ten, five years, ten years. I don't think we can, we can operate like that. So we narrowed that window and kind of moved it forward in a much different way. Mike and I, Mike more so than myself, we have a background in academia. So everything that we do is based on a, it's not just Bill and Mike sitting in a room going, I got a great idea. So we looked at several processes. One of them is Demings Planning Cycle, the do check, plan, do, check, and then act. And how do we, how do we execute that in local government? And how do we do that from, from, with an elected, an elective, elected officials' perspective? In addition to assisting the manager, because the manager's got to run the show that we, that we lay out for them. So we've got to really make it a two-pronged approach. The other component that Mike and I really emphasize is that the plan has got to be integrated into everything that we do. Has to be in our, all of our existing plans have to be taken into consideration. There's no sense in having a general plan if we're going to ignore it. There's also no sense in going through master planning processes if we're going to ignore those. So we need to integrate those into our strategic plan and the projects and programs that we're going to put forward. The other huge component of that, which really lays down the year after year plan for us is our annual budget. So we look at integrating the strategic plan into the budget process. And then for us as, as elected officials, we don't, we don't work this Monday through Friday or we're not in this. While our job is a seven-day-a-week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, even on vacation, I'm sure your phone will ring or at least your emails will come through. We really need the staff to be engaged in this. It's, it's our vision as elected officials, but it's their plan to have to execute. So we want to get that into everything that we do. So we get in our, our agendas, the staff work plans, et cetera. So it's not a thing that we say, we've done a strategic plan, here's our three-ring binder and we put it away and then we pretend that we're executing it. That's not the system that, that we're proposing that you use. So we talk about why is strategic planning important? And it's really important from the perspective that we have the, these political ends or outcomes that we're trying to, to achieve, because that's what we do as, as elected officials. And the town manager has to try to execute that and run the day-to-day operation of the city. That's the council manager form of government. And these two items come together and they don't collide, but there is tension, natural tension between those two components. So we want to make sure that whatever we, whatever plan we put forward meets the needs of both of those, those powers, if you will, between the policy and administration and the execution. It's also extremely important for us to remember that there is a very delicate balance between the amount of time that things take and the amount of money. We can't say we're going to rebuild an entire roadway if we don't have the money to do it. And in the same regard, we can't say we want to do twenty things when we only have the time and the capacity to do five. And we, we try to maintain that balance and we work with both the staff and you to make sure that whatever items we push forward are actually achievable. No, again, money is an object and so is time. So we want to make sure that we keep those two things in balance. And this slide, for us and many of our clients that we work with around the country, this slide is very meaningful to particularly the staff as they look at trying to meet the needs and the wants of their elected officials and saying, hey, wait, I, I really don't have the capacity to do this. It's, it's really important for them to be able to express that to you and then help, and then you help them decide what's really their priorities. This is about your priorities getting met within the community in addition to them being able to execute it. So that we, we constantly refer back to the teeter totters, how I, is how I look at this one. The other thing that strategic planning is really important, and this one is, is, is really key. We talk about the elected body setting the direction. And, and I use that as you're going to, you're going to tell the manager who's the bus driver where to take this bus that you call Cave Creek. But one of you is yelling faster, one of you is yelling slower, one of you is yelling right, one is yelling left, one is sitting idly, saying, I'm not even sure where we're going. And somebody else is changing the direction constantly. How does a manager drive that bus? The strategic plan puts that all together, lays out the roadmap and moves forward. Now, as with any good road trip, you can always deviate from your original plan with the consensus of everybody moving forward. So even though you've laid the, laid the tracks to go in one direction, if there's an opportunity or there's a change in the environment around us that we say, no, we have to make this immediate shift, that you can do that. It's just, it's a deliberate decision to make that change. So we try to keep everybody on the same page. We get everybody moving in the same direction and that's the direction that you're going to provide to the staff. Once that roadmap is, is laid out, then we turn to the, the manager and we say, all right, take us there. And if something's going to change, then we will, will deviate together. But it'll be a, it'll be a very conscious decision to move, to move forward. It also brings focus so that this, we're going to start honing in on what Mike and I refer to this. We start talking about strategic focus and it really helps everybody see the future. We try to lay a foundation that becomes evergreen moving forward and then the projects that you want to execute in that one-to-three-year window, those are the items that you're going to achieve. It's not, what are we going to do ten years from now? Or what do we want to be in twenty thirty or in twenty forty? It's what are we going to do now? What are we going to do next year? What are we going to do the year after? Those are the things that are important. They're important for you because you ran for a reason, you ran to do something. So let's achieve that as long as they're in alignment with what is natural for a city to want to, or a town to move forward. So we really try to help bring, bring some focus there. So honing in a little bit farther, strategic focus is, is about providing these organizational priorities. Let's not change the direction at every single council meeting. Today, we're turning right. Next week's meeting, we're turning left. A week later, we're going faster. We can't, that, that's really no way to, to, to run business. It's no way to run, run the city. It, it also helps provide some distractions. I call it the, the good ideas. In a couple of weeks, perhaps you'll all be down in Tucson at the League of Arizona Cities. We're going to walk away from there with some great ideas and we're going to come back and we're going to say, hey, I think we should do X. And then the manager at the end of September theoretically goes to ICMA and she's going to come back with some great ideas. Those are distractions. We need to keep ourselves focused. We can't chase after the shiny, the shiny balloon when we've said we're going to carry red balloons. And then the next one that we go to the conference and I said, those are the Mylar balloons that we come back with and go, look at this one. We can't, it, it's hard to do that. Now, it may be a great thing and we may collectively say, yes, we want to, we want to make this shift. And in order to do that, to maintain our teeter totter, we're going to have to not do this in order to do that. But you've made that decision. That's your decision to move forward. So that's kind of what we, what we try to bring to this, to this process. Then you can see we drive policy and then you representing the community, those, those priorities are always in play as we, as we move forward. So here's the academic part of this. This is really a systems approach. It's about purpose, function, process and structure. Your role as the town council is to really look at the function and the, and the purpose. Why are we here? What are we doing? What do we need to achieve? And the process and structure, the how we're going to do that is really up to the manager to decide how do we, how do we execute this, this mission? You're providing the resources, she's providing the execution. The thing that makes this most important are the things that are not included in it. We are not talking about a strategic plan that involves day-to-day operational items. This is things that are long-term, things that go multi-year, things that take a year to plan and then a year to execute. Those are the strategic initiatives we're talking about, not what does the, what does the clerk do for the city council meeting? What does the, what does the parks department? How are they maintaining the, you know, what kind of mowers are they using? That's not the kind of stuff we're talking about. So we leave all of that out of it, the excluding the day-to-day activities, the core functions, no, nothing short-term. We really want to focus on what is going to move us in the next year or two. And that's the strategic focus piece that we're, that we're talking about. Every community kind of operates the same. We identified over the last decade or more, these are about the five typical focus areas that every single community has. Everybody's worried about their fiscal sustainability. We can't be spending more than we're bringing in. We don't want to raise taxes or we do. Whatever that scenario is, we want to maintain our fiscal health. We all have infrastructure that we need to maintain. We can't forget about that. We, I think, I think every one of us as an elected official knows what happens when we ignore our infrastructure. So we've got to maintain that. We are essentially here for a safe and sustainable community. That's our public safety. That's our maintenance, not maintenance of the roads, but that's, you know, our care of our roads, that's our parks, that's the activities that we do. We cannot forget about the organization. You are also in charge of all the employees here. And keeping the employees, A, here, paid well, you know, well, to your, to your standard, that's always, that's always a question. What is, what does well-paid look like? I know we wrestle with that constantly. But we have to make, we have to keep our focus also on the organization. It's an important component of this. And then in addition to that, we've got economic growth. It's either maintaining our base or trying to grow it. A lot of communities, if you think about going back east, they're not really in growth. The East Coast isn't. We've worked in a couple of communities in, in Maryland, for example. They're not growing the way we are here in Arizona. But they are worried about maintaining what they currently have. So for them, it's not necessarily economic growth, it's economic maintenance. So we, we vary that by, by community. I also use the example, there may be things specific to each community. So we've got a client in South Carolina, in the Hilton Head area. For them, the intercoastal waterways and water protection, whether it be wetlands, and they've got a lot of septic systems that are leaching into the, into the waterways. So how they maintain their waterways is extremely important for them. So they have an additional focus area of their main, maintenance of, of the intercoastal waterway. So every community is a little bit different, but these we found are generally the five that, that seem to work. So we would look at that and that all leads us to quality of life. We, I think we've all recognized that that's all about balance. If we, if any one of these things, if that is our sole focus, if all we focus on is infrastructure and we're spending all of our money in water and sewer pipes and we spend nothing in public safety or for parks, what, what happens to our residents? They come out revolting. Why do the parks look like this? How come I can't get, why are the response times from fire department twenty minutes? Why can't I get a police officer to show up? So we really try to maintain a good balance of, of things as we move through, through the community to maintain that quality of life. So here's an example of a strategic focus area. We ask that, and we work with you and the staff to kind of create these. We'll give you some general language that is a good starting point. And then you decide, does that, does that apply to Cave Creek? What applies to, to Wickenburg or to Lofton, South Carolina, does not necessarily apply here. Sometimes the language is, is generic enough, but sometimes it's not. So under fiscal and resource management, we just, we will say, and I like to use the phrase, this is your, your, we will always statement. We will always implement innovative and responsible policies and business practices to effectively manage our fiscal and human resources. The city or town will maintain stable, transparent, forward-looking fiscal condition, providing an outstanding quality of life for our residents. Business practices should be efficient, business-friendly and ensure exceptional customer service to all stakeholders. Now, you can go, that's, that's really worry. What does that really mean? Well, we'll define that as we go through that in your process. But that is the, that is the quintessential, we will always. And we'll create one of those for every one of those focus areas. So that once you, you've created it, you theoretically never have to go back to it. Mike and I have created a horrible business model that we will set you up with a process that you never need to bring us back for, that you'll be able to execute it year after year. It's a terrible business model, but Mike and I did not go to business school. We were, we're local government people. So we understand that the cost of bringing consultants back year after year. Now, we've got this customer in South Carolina who loves to have us back because Mike and I are great people. But you don't need to. That's how we built the system. So anyway, you've got this strategic focus area defines your, we will always. And then we asked, and then we, from there, we create what we call guiding principles, which are, and this is how we'll do it. So there's a follow-up to that. And then we, we hold these up as the principles by which we will operate. And when I say we, I mean you as council and everybody as staff. These are the principles that they'll use. So for that focus area, guiding principle one talks about business processes. Guiding principle two talks about financial initiatives that allow the town to proactively recruit, plan and maximize and retain human resources that, that's the resource piece that's different than your highly performing organization. That's how they function. This is how you get them and keep them. Guiding principle three, we talk about innovative technology initiatives, supporting what we do. That is to maintain as we move forward. I thought when we put this in a number of years ago, that this would go away. And as we continue to evolve as a society, the technology and innovation continues to, continues to dog us. So I think this, this one is going to be there forever. Guiding principle four, creating and pursuing opportunities for collaboration and regional partnerships. That is really important, I think, here in the valley. Everything we do is regional, but it is not exclusively regional. So we want to look for those opportunities that we can maximize our regional partnerships and look for those opportunities where we could be an individual city or town. And then guiding principle five is implementing and seeking diverse revenue sources. And that, that just goes to our expenses are going to always go up. And we can't rely on a tax increase. So how do we maintain our revenues? Because we've got to keep that teeter totter in play. We can't, we can't just spend money and we can't just spend time. We've got to keep it kind of in balance. So that kind of explains a little bit of that concept of strategic focus that we ask you to identify what areas do you want to focus on? We try to define that for you. And then we talk about what principles are important. And that is basically you're telling the staff, this is how fast you're going to drive the bus, this, the directions that we're going to go. And then specifically, you're going to tell them what projects do you want to focus on? And that, that's our net, our next component of this. We talk about projects that are achievable within the next one to three years. That's what we, that's what we bring to you. So we talk about projects. They're specific, they're measurable, they're attainable. We can get it done. Old plans, if you've been involved in, and I go the old-school strategic planning process where the consultants came in, everybody got multiple little sticky notes and it's okay, red ones being this and yellow ones being that. Let's go put it up on the wall here and we'll figure. We don't do that. That, that doesn't work. It's difficult to execute. So we talk, and then the end result of that is you have main goal one, sub-goal one, A, sub-goal one, A, one point one. Some of those and gen, they were generally visionary. We're going to strive to be X. Mike and I are going to take you through a process, process that will say, we will. And you're going to achieve it. Because the staff says, yep, we can do that. And you say, yep, this is exactly what we want. And then you let them, let them lose to, to go forward. So there's a little bit of a difference between the old and the new. The old books used to be two or three, three-inch, three-ring binders. Mike and I will leave you about fifteen or twenty pages of what you're going to execute. I am missing a slide. From this presentation, interesting. So I wanted to give you a, an example of what does, what do, what does our project list look like?
It's, it's the last slide.
Oh, you, yeah. Well, there you go. All right. I thought I had it slipped in here. So Mike's going to talk to you about the project process. Do you have any question about strategic focus or how we, how we walk you through that at all? All right. We'll let Mike talk about projects because I think at the end of the day, that's the most important thing. What are we going to get done? So let Mike walk you through that.
So one of the things I wanted, before we get into the project pieces, that there's, there's a great book by Peterson Gay called The Dance of Change, The Dance of Change. And one of the things that he talks about is managing the horizon. And that's what strategic planning is about, is managing the horizon. Two examples, quick examples. When I was in Sedona, we put a plan in place. The, and it was council-driven. And I mentioned this during our conversation with some of you council members earlier in the month. It wasn't my idea to do a strategic plan, but it was the best thing that ever happened. One of the things that they put in that plan was for the city of, county, city of Sedona to take over eighty-nine A, for us to take that back from the state so that we could put in pedestrian improvements that the state wasn't in favor of doing. That was a visionary item. And now if you go in uptown Sedona, everything's changed. In Tucson, one of the things that the council did that was really pivotal in the strategic plan there is they created these overlay districts so that you could, you could essentially plop down zoning in a particular area and build. Why was that, why was that significant? If you go up to the University of Arizona now, all of the student dorms were built under the overlay district. We built student dorms downtown, which along with the streetcar allowed us to revitalize the downtown. So when I was young and not that, you know, focused more on getting stuff done, I didn't think I needed the plan, but I am a big component of, of strategic planning. So let's talk about how we build your projects. One of the things that we do is that we, we want to know what the council priorities are. We also want to know what staff priorities are. We do a lot of groundwork, a very simple point-and-click survey where we get a lot of data from you before we go into the workshop. So the workshops aren't spent like Bill said, somebody stick all these sticky notes. I can tell you and I, I, we actually terminated our strategic planning consultant in Sedona and we did it ourselves. The council was so frustrated. So that's, that's kind of my experience. Our staff built it and that's where I learned to do strategic planning because. That's kind of my experience. Uh, our staff built it, and that's where I learned to do strategic planning, because we, we decided the consultant didn't know what they were doing. Um, so in this particular case, uh. What we like to do is make sure that we identify your priorities, council, we identify staff priorities. From that, Bill mentioned that he, we, the focus areas, the focus areas and the guiding principles, your guiding principles will be. Help along with the focus area to say, is this project appropriate or not? And then we move into establishing, establishing the work plan. The other thing that we do. Uh, some of you have heard of uh, the book Why by Simon Sink. You know, it's one of the things that we, we want to get things done, but we never ask. Why are we doing this? So we, we relied pretty heavily on, on that practice, and we look at, ask. When these projects are being developed, does it improve a system? Are you looking at improve the way you're operating? Does employees, has it helped the employees become more skilled, upskilled to do the kind of things that you need to get done? Community, does it affect your community quality of life? Is it a best practice? Best practice is great, because if somebody else has done it, you know it works, and they've already, you know, as they say in the military, they've already paid for the territory, so you don't have to pay for it again. You know this project works. Um, and we want to make sure that the project, does it meet the, the focus area goals? Does it meet your guiding principles? And um, making sure that it's, it's relevant to other plans. So. When we talk with you in the work sessions, we're going to be asking. Why? You know, why should we do this project, even though it's a project that's been identified either by staff or it's been identified by the council? What do you want? You know, what is going to be done? We'll answer that. How it's going to be done, and we tell councils this. All over the country, we're not going to sit here and start planning the project in the work session or the workshop, because we'll be there all day. Uh, how is the performance metrics? And I know. Your guys are very interested in that, so we are going to be talking about performance metrics, because ultimately it's about making sure that we're moving the needle ahead, just not. Just not uh identifying. Projects. This is a project list. Um, I'm not going to read through these, but they're, they're on your. So at the end of the day, besides your, your uh. Your focus areas, your guiding principles. Under each one of the focus areas and guiding principles, you have a list of projects that will identify the project. The department lead, what fiscal year it's going to get done. The beauty of all this, if you go back to that. After the dimming cycle, we had the chart that showed the budget every year. During the budget process, you'll reshuffle the deck on these projects, even though you've got a, even though you've got a, a uh. Let's say a two or three-year plan. Every year you'll look at it. So when you're planning your money, like hmm, here's what we're going to do with all these dollars that we have. You'll also be planning, what's the direction for your staff, mayor and council? Every year, so you'll be shifting the projects, and that's why technically. You shouldn't need to have. Us come back. You shouldn't need to have consultants come back, because it, it's becomes part of the way that you do business now. Bill and I have been doing this for about eleven years. Every community, every single client that we have put these plans in, the councils adopted it. But I mean, we might as well do a little bit of marketing here. So we have not had a situation where the council's gone, hmm, I don't do it. We're dealing with a client now, we're back uh, and uh, Bill and I'll be next week up in beautiful place Spokane. Uh, it's one of our first clients, the fire district, and they've asked us to come back. They've been using. Platforms, strategic planning platform for over a decade. So. We not only have short-term clients that we've done in the state here, Wickenburg, Buckeye, uh, those recently, we also have these long-term clients that we've, we've dealt with. Uh, I would not do this. I would not be involved in this to fail. If, if we cannot work with you and develop something that's useful for you and to help you shape the future of this community, because that's your job. As elected officials, it's our job as a manager to implement what you want us to do. And the more that we have direction we have from you. The better we are at aligning our staff to get it done. So uh, with that being said, uh, mayor and council, we, Bill and I are here and available for uh, questions. Thank you.
Question from council.
I have a question. Very nice to have you here. Thank you for being with us. Um, my question is, we currently have. A strategic plan, uh, which has met some of our expectations, not all of them. Some more than others. Uh, feel confident in its substance. How will you use that information as we go forward?
I think what we'll, what we'll end up doing, and we, we do this often, when we come in and there's kind of an existing framework, we're able to take. Uh, some of that language, some of those projects, and we just integrate it into, in, into our system. So. Uh, for example, if there are projects that have been identified. Or goals that you are looking to achieve, we would. Uh, put those into our model. And you would see it. More than likely show up as a, a project, for example. Um, perhaps it's uh, im- improve uh. You know, the three miles of median on. Cave Creek Road, for example. I, I don't know if that's a, a thing or not, but.
It is a thing.
Oh, there you go. Okay. It's a big deal in our community, so. So, there you go. Um. Uh, i- i- and if that's in there, we'll, we'll make that, that'll be a project. It'll more than likely be under, uh, I would imagine, infrastructure, but it may be. Uh, a safe and sustainable community. Perhaps it's uh, it's a vision, um, line of sight issue or something. So we'll figure out where it belongs, but that project will then show up. Will show in that regard. Um, if there's language that you have created. Um, that defines some of these areas, that we'll use that as your uh. As the language that defines your focus area. So the work will not have been wasted. Uh, we'll just integrate and put it into a slightly different model that allows it to be a little easier to execute.
Very good. That's, that was my concern. We did put two days worth of work into it, and some of us years before that. So I was hoping that we could. In, include some of that information that's still relevant.
Yeah, we don't throw the baby out with the bathwater.
Thank you. Do we have a timeline that we're looking at?
Mayor, members of council, um, on the agenda today, if uh. You are willing and interested to engage their services, we will move forward, and I believe their surveys are. The first step, their surveys um, for staff, I believe, and for the elected officials, and they could speak to the timeline once, once they get going.
Okay, thank you.
So we will, we'll do um. Surveys more than likely September, toward the end of September. Um. Takes us a little while. We uh. Try to make sure we meet, meet the needs to make sure that the surveys are through there. We also do what we call an alignment to make sure. Everybody, uh, we do the same survey for you that we do for staff, so we want to make sure. Everybody agrees that the plan's important, that you want to make sure that uh, it's transparent that we, so we kind of do this a few alignment questions, and then we really get into. These are the, these are the five areas that we want to focus on. Everybody in agreement with that. And then we ask you, if, if you're in agreement with that. What do you identify as being your immediate? Problems, and do you have solutions or suggestions for a solution? So those are essentially uh, are, and every survey varies, but we're between ten and fifteen question stops. So we uh, we build that, we'll build that in September, we'll get that out to you probably the end of September, beginning of October, and then we would expect that we're going to execute this. Um, probably toward the end of November, that very first week of November. End of October, very first week of November. So we're, we're in a very tight time window, because we realize you're going to start building budget pretty quick. So we want to do this faster for you.
One last question. Uh, what? What is your staff at the bridge group? Is it just the two of you, or do you have administrative staff to help you? Execute all of this paperwork and? All the coordination that it requires?
It's uh, we, we're lean. It's uh, it's the, we have um. I have a, like a, a accountant and a, a financial person, but pretty much on an operational level, Bill and I handle that. We've been able to, to create a system. That is convenient for you, but also is convenient for us. You know, we, we've worked it so that it's, it doesn't take a lot of um. Um. That it's value added in terms of our time and your time, so that we, we've made sure that we're not, you know, we don't have to, we don't need like twenty people or thirty people to do the work. It's uh, the, the focus is, is really making sure that it's, it's, it's usable, and it, a lot of it goes back to a council member that, or vice mayor, sorry. Sorry, vice mayor. Um, that experience I had with a previous consultant where we. We were spending, I, I won't tell you how many meetings in Sedona just talking about minutia. You know, I mean. Just wasting our time and wasting the council's time. I'm, I'm, we're not going to waste your, your time. So we, we've, we've kept lean and. Um, we still get things done, but, but not with a lot of uh, moving parts.
Very good, thank you.
But if I can just add, I think the other thing that's important to point out is we do not rely on your staff at all to do any of our work. Um, that we do everything internally. Each of us use. Our spouses, I don't know if I can say it like that. As our administrative support. Um. So. That gets a little tenuous at times. There was a, I'll just tell you a quick story. There was a time when my wife used to travel with us, so. And uh. Every, every time we'd come in and we'd say, oh, this is Mike, this is Bill, and oh, by the way, this is Bill's wife. There's inevitably somebody who says, oh, this is going to be fun to watch, because you get to watch the boss in charge of. The person who's going to be the boss at home in a very short order. Um, but we uh, we've really worked that out, and, and again, with uh, with Mike and I. Uh, having been friends for twenty-five years, having been in business now uh, since twenty-eleven, we really have worked out. Um, which one of us does which parts of the, of the project, and we really kind of have it uh, have it as a well-oiled machine. At, at this moment, so.
Very good, thank you.
You talked about, the process you're using is very similar to the, to what the military and to a certain extent, federal government uses a strategic planning process. One of the things that I'm interested in is performance metrics. So when you say performance metrics, can you give us an example?
Well, I, I think what you'll end up with is we can provide some generic. Performance measurements that have been used either by ICMA or here in Valley Ben, uh, there's a Valley benchmarking. Uh, group that's put together. We can provide those to, to the staff. I would. Personally, I would suggest that the. One of the projects that comes out of this may be a more in-depth look at, uh, what do we want to measure? Um, a- a- and I realize I'm preaching to the choir when I, when I speak to you, uh, Dussey on this, but when we talk about measuring performance, there's a way. There's a couple of different things you want to measure, and you want to make sure that you're measuring something that's, that's relevant. Um, so the example that I always use, which is, which I think is a great example, is um. Fire services. Fire department will always tell you that the response time is the most important measurement, so they, they'd say, our response time is X, our response time is X. And while that's. Important. Um, it only tells one component of it, so it tells you how fast they get there. If you're not measuring. Cardiac survivability or uh, structural damage, so fire contained to the room of origin or contained to the building of origin. Um. The response time only tells you that they get there fast, but if, so the example is if they get there fast all the time. But every one of the people who have heart attacks in your community die. Then that means they get there fast, but they don't know what they're doing. Or they get there fast and the house burns down. It's never contained to the room of origin. So there's always that second step of that. So let's measure the things that are really important to measure. Let's not, uh, let's not measure. The number of road miles that we have. What, that tells you nothing. Um, one of the. One common benchmark in parks, for example, is acres per thousand a resident. What, what does that tell you? As an elected official, what does that tell you? So we want to make sure we're measuring things that are, that are, that are relevant. So. While we can provide you some of those, um, I'm going to say. Fairly typical pieces. If there are things specifically that you're looking for, I would suggest that you create a project that looks at. At more in-depth.
Sure, numbers of users for a park might be a better metric than number of acres per person.
Correct, things that you, and then you have to be able to actually gather the measurement. Um, you know, how do we know how many people show up at a park unless there's somebody standing there counting them? But. So I, I think we, we really embark on a discussion regarding that, but we've got the tools from ICMA, and we've got the tools from Valley Benchmarking. That we can say here are, here's fifty of them. I don't think you want to measure all fifty, so let's pick a few. Let's get staff used to that process, and then let's start honing in. On what we actually want to start measuring. And I think that's a good. You know, personally, I think that's a good step forward, especially for a, a community or a staff that's not used to measuring them. There's an adjustment period there, and we have to, it has to be meaningful for them as well as you. Um. And sometimes we're measuring it to just benchmark it, to say, okay, well, now we know where we're at. Uh, we have a, we have a very extensive street sweeper, street sweeper program in Goodyear. And somebody said, well, we should be measuring how much we're picking up. And somebody said, well, what difference does that make? And the, the, the reality of it is. If you pick, if you have a hundred road miles and you pick up two tons. Today. And you have two hundred road miles ten years from now, and you're still only picking up two tons. Chances are you're driving faster. And a street sweeper that drives faster doesn't do a good a job as does when it drives slower. So that's your measurement, and that turns into your value of what you're measuring, as opposed to just measuring the tonnage that it's picking up. So we've got, we, we kind of have to combine them, make it worth something. Cause then we know what our investment is worth it. Um, and, and that those, I've got a million examples of things that go wrong, but. I, I think we, we can help you. A little bit in that line. We can put that in our. Proposal as well.
Yeah, I. When you have a strategic plan, and you have the, you know, things you're going to implement, if you don't have performance metrics and say you, you met it to X degree or Y degree. It's pretty meaningless.
Correct, and one of the things that, you know, I, I talked about is we're going to, you're going to leave with a project list, and you saw in that example, it's going to be completed in FY twenty-four, FY twenty-five. You, that's a yes or no. You've either done it or you haven't. Um, and there are some things that we're now going to measure in performance uh, related as well. So you're going to end up with. Uh. Regular operational performance measurements, and then you're going to know whether you complete it. So if we say we're going to do the three miles of Cape, uh. Three miles of median repair of Cave Creek Road by the end of fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-five, that's a yes or no. You will know whether you've done it or not. So there, you know, that, that's a, that's a different kind of measurement, but there is accountability that comes with the system as well. And that's the part that we're very focused on. Uh, doesn't do us any good to talk about a project if we're not going to do it. So we want to achieve it.
Yeah, there are different levels of performance metrics based on. Who's doing it and what the final result is.
Yeah.
So there, there are two separate metrics within there.
Correct.
Yeah.
And I think that, I think we're saying the same thing, but we're just uh. Um. We have to decide what we want to do and how we want to get there. And I, when I say we, I mean all of us.
Yeah, one of the metrics is, is it done? Yes or no? The other metric is how well did we do it? And I think that's the one that we're, we're probably uh. We probably have the most work on.
Other questions from council?
I have a comment. And good morning, Mike and Bill. Appreciate your coming and sharing with us. Uh, this is Paul. Um, first, I'd like to say that I really appreciate uh, that premise uh, that you shared. In the comment about we will always. That feels like it can be both reactive and proactive, and I think having a standard um. For that is essential stuff. Um, Cave Creek really likes clarity. And I think that helps. Um, I like that part that you've described about being values-based. Um, we have a great general plan that's got lots of good ideas. And the uh, the sort of faltered strategic planning effort we did. Um, also had some great ideas in there. Um, fiscally responsible. Um, I think we are. We, we've got a sweet balance, and we're able to uh, complete projects that we've started. Previous council did a great job in uh. Setting us up with a water uh, question and um. And that result is well underway and much appreciated. So we've got good stuff happening. Um, the piece about innovation is um. An interesting piece, because to have the community as well as the council understand how important. Um, our language is about what we're doing, how the, how we describe the projects. There's nobody on our council. There's nobody on our council who's against development, but there are a few of us who are really interested in. How we develop and how important our history is to acknowledge. So that's, that's something I'm um. I'm really interested in hearing more about. And then the final comment is. Comes back to that communication piece. Um, this is a small town and it's got a history of being even a smaller town. And the point I'm trying to make is people in Cave Creek want to know what's going on. And we have a lot of good stuff going on, but our communication system um, needs to be um, enriched. And I hope that we can do that with, and I know that may be minutia, but actually it's really big minutia. Thanks.
Other questions from council? The Toms? Questions?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation. It was extremely impressive. I was thinking of Susan Plancy, it used to be a member of the council we passed in the last year. Because when you mentioned a finite resource of money, I mean, that's odd. But when you mentioned time, probably not a bad to my.
Microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Those were great comments too.
So, no, I just, anyway, when you brought those two issues up, uh, I thought of Susan Plancing and uh, the faces change. As the years go by here, so many people I used to serve with in the community, mayors and council members are no longer here. So it's a good reminder that in this moment we have and we enjoy. Um, that we can, you know, treat time as critical as the source of income that are provided by the taxpayers. We might become enthused about things that are important to the community and realize that the window of opportunity is not measured by us. Our interest in serving, but it's mentioned, it's measured by the larger issues of uh. What the town has made available for governance. And then what the town makes available from the people that step forward from their families and their jobs uh, to provide governance as well. So I. I was really impressed. Also, you guys are fellow lifeguards, some currently in the pool. So uh, when you come in to brief this group, uh, we'll know what the pH is in the water. And we'll know what the problem kit is at the, the waiting pool at the other side because you're literally living what the same challenges are that you're advising for this group. So uh, I'm very appreciative and very excited.
Well, we're still, we're still with questions at this point.
My part, you'll see it, communications here are.
Any questions, Tom? Okay, we're a public comment?
I have no one we should speak.
Okay, uh, then we're looking for a. Promotion if we uh, if you get anyone.
I'll do it.
Bernie, are you out there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm here.
After the motion. So right now we're in questions. Bernie, any questions?
No, I don't. I, I, I appreciate the presentation and their backgrounds.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion at this point? Oh, Mr. McGuire?
Yes, this is a motion to approve engaging Bridge Group LLC services.
Second.
Um, at this point then, we'll take uh, comments from the. Motion maker.
Yeah, um, I, I think there's, there's an important component here that's difficult probably for all councils. Uh, David is here from the community. Uh, we probably don't have enough. Input from the community, you know, maybe that's because they feel we're doing a great job and, you know, that's a compliment, but still. As a part of setting the goals, input from the community is, is very important and it's a, it's a difficult issue.
You have the second, Dusty?
Yeah, I. I think the way you get community involvement is you put together a good strategic plan, get it out there and let people comment on it before you finalize it. I think that's, and I think that's what we talked about when the three of us talked to you, but we talked about doing that. And I think that's a. That's really a solid thing to do. That way the community. Just like the, the general plan, the community is forced to take ownership of something and, you know. Speak now or forever hold your peace. I mean, I, I think that's a good thing.
Other comments? My, my, my comment is, is uh, I've, I've been through these before and what I really like about this is the second slide, P D C A. Uh, start out because that is the revolutionary concept that has uh, changed industry. And then government, it's, it originated, of course, in business schools.
Did you remind us what P D C A is?
Plan, do, check and act, the Deming P D C A, the four, the four-step cycle. Um, what I really like about your, it strips out all the fluff. Uh, a lot of the wasted time by doing things offline. And uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very encouraged by that because uh. How, spending four hours on writing admission statement, I don't know if I could stand that again. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So uh. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this and I think uh, it, it's really encouraging to have. Someone who's done it before in municipal and for both sides of the governance of a town. Uh, I, I think that's, that's really a nice touch. So. With that, we will take a uh, a voice vote. Excuse me, it's financial, so we'll take a uh.
To that point, may I ask a question? I don't have an amount of what we're looking for. So we're approving. We have, oh, so this is just. I see.
Okay, what?
It will be within the manner. That's good. Thank you.
So let's, let's um.
You're looking for the motion?
Uh, we're looking for a motion to approve engaging uh, Bridge Group LLC services. Um. I guess we ought to have some kind of qualification. Would you, would, would you entertain uh, as long as the price is under the authority of the town manager?
Yeah, uh, and council.
Well, it's the town manager.
It's the town manager.
Expenditure.
Okay, yes.
Is that?
That's good.
Yes.
Okay, so with that.
But I'm, I'm going to interrupt here just for a minute. It's not, it, but I didn't hear a dollar amount just generally.
The town manager's expenditure limit is $25,000.
Under, it has to be under $25,000, Mayor Weissman.
Thank you, Catherine.
All right, Councilmember Arton? Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkma?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Ray?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Notice um, some confusion among that number. You're good with that? No, not at all. Okay, very good. Yes.
Mayor Morris?
I, motion carries seven zero. Uh, with that, do we have motion adjourned?
So. Hey, Mayor? May I uh, make a motion to adjourn, but also uh, just share with everyone that while I've been laying here on the bed, uh, listening to this presentation. I took yet another COVID-19 test and I have a blue and a pink line. So I'm just thrilled to be able to participate. Participate in spite of the uh, the scourge.
Thanks for joining us, honey. We appreciate that.
Thank you all.
Okay, I guess uh, it always favors German.
Hi.
Hi.
Well, seven zero, being adjourned.